This is a special meeting in the Colorado City Metropolitan District. Would you join me for the closing?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
For those of you so inclined, if you could join me for a minute or sign off. Thank you. Let the minutes reflect that four of the five board members are here and that Greg is on Zoom. So we have all board members and the district manager in attendance. We have one and only one agenda item tonight, and that is to review the expectations of the Colorado City. We'll talk about just drawing a blank. Architectural, I can't remember what it stands for now.
Advisory.
Advisory. Advisory Committee, there we go. And their responsibility to covenants, report from the chairman of that committee as to research he's done on the ability of the board to enforce the covenant. After Larry's presentation, I will poll each board member, get some questions and thoughts, as well as those of you in the audience if you have things that you want to share. Without further ado, Larry, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. The intent of what I'm going to do is to cover the legal aspects of the covenant enforcement and what we have found out in regard to the law as it relates to covenants, so that we can all be on the same page. I see that as a stumbling block that is interfering with our ability to all move it together in harmony. So I'm starting with the Supreme Court, and that's going to be very short to get right into it. But the Supreme Court rulings, the primary rulings and authorities for the Supreme Court are the executive, legislative, judicial branches, and then those are the primaries. The secondary is Black's Law Dictionary, which I'm going to be quoting in here, and that's why I bring this whole thing up. Black's Law Dictionary is a secondary authority, one of the few that the Supreme Court will use as an authority. So what is Black Law Dictionary definition of law? Law is a solemn expression of legislative will, in this sense, and this is a quote, "and includes the decisions of courts of justice as well as acts of the legislation. The judgment of a competent court until reversed or otherwise superseded is law as much as any statute." So what is a covenant? Well, again, according to Black's Law Dictionary, quote, "An agreement, convention, or promise of two or more parties by deed and writing, sign, seal, and deliver, by which either of the parties pledges himself to the other that something is either done or shall be done." Then move down to civil law. Civil law originated in Europe, the most prominent feature of which is the court principles are codified into a referable system which serves as a primary source of law. In civil law, the judge's role is to establish the facts of a case and to apply the provisions of the applicable code. Let me read that again. In civil law, the judge's role is to establish the facts of a case and to apply the provisions of that case to the applicable code. So what is common law? Statutes or civil law are the primary source of law, and the power to enact statutes is reserved to elected lawmakers. However, judicial decisions also have the force of law. Statutes do not cover every conceivable case, and even when the statute does control a case, the courts may need to interpret it. Judicial decisions are known collectively as case law. A judicial decision legally binds the parties in the case and also may serve as a law in the same respective sense as the statute. In other words, a judicial decision determines the outcome of a particular case and also may regulate future conduct of all persons within the jurisdiction of the court. And that jurisdiction may be regional, as in the state of Colorado. The opinions of the courts taken together comprise the common law. When there is no statute specifically addressing a legal dispute, the courts look through prior cases for guidance. The issues, reasoning, and holdings of prior cases guide courts in setting similar disputes. A prior opinion or collection of opinions on a particular legal issue is known as a precedent, and courts generally follow precedent if any when deciding cases. Breaking the precedent may be justified when circumstances or attitudes have changed, but following precedent is the norm. This gives common law a certain predictability and consistency. The common law often controls civil matters such as contract disputes and personal injury cases. That's directly out of Black's Legal Dictionary. The covenant authority compared to the courts. Because the Colorado City covenants are contracts subject to judicial oversight, they are subject to review, just like all other covenants and homeowner associations and metro districts across the state. The intent is to make sure that in Colorado, each resident, subject to a real estate covenant agreement, is treated fairly and justly compared to all other residents in the state with similar covenants and circumstances. The rulings of the court are the primary law governing covenants. The rulings of the courts are the primary law governing covenants. Going forward, we will rely on the wording in the covenants modified by judicial review, Colorado Case Law or Common Law, as our guide to enforcement. In importance and the force of law, case law is primary and covenant wording is secondary. Let me read that again. The rulings of the courts are the primary law governing covenants. Going forward, we will rely on the wording in the covenants modified by judicial review, Colorado Case Law or Common Law, as our guide to enforcement. In importance and the force of law, case law is primary and covenant wording is secondary. In the video that was watched by the board, the narrator talked about the compliance and enforcement process. She said that when you receive the complaint or issue, the covenants need to be checked. The second step is to check the case law to establish what the current case law says in regard to the specific circumstances. Therein is our challenge. Since the laws of covenant enforcement are the result of judicial review and case law, there are changes to case law as courts make decisions based on new circumstances involving the cases. In fact, those changes may not happen more than once every two years or even decades. But common law is a dynamic process which can change with equalized values and expectations. What we don't know is if that ten or twenty year change in the judge's ruling that affects the way a covenant may be enforced happened last month. The case law search is one benefit of having a law firm manage a special district. There are many to do. Unfortunately, we are too large for a law firm or management company and too small to have our own attorney in house. So there are legal search engines which will search one of those changes, and those search engines can be subscribed to around sixty-five bucks a month for private citizen. I don't care to spend that kind of money and then have to learn the legal search system to check for similar case rulings. So how does the committee need to view compliance? Well, court emphasis is on what the resident reasonably perceives, not what the benefit other property owners will receive. Using the trash can issue as an example, if someone sees a benefit for themselves and not looking at the three yard dumpster, that would not be a consideration for the court to consider. Therefore, it cannot be a factor for the architectural committee to consider. The only precedent the court will consider is the perception of the resident who owns the dumpster and whether or not that person thinks the covenant is enforceable. It's kind of a hundred-neted degree flip on the way that you look at the covenants and the enforcement. Let me read it again. "Court emphasis is on what the resident reasonably perceives, not what is the benefit other property owners will receive." Using the trash can issue as an example, if someone sees a benefit for themselves and not looking at the three yard dumpster, that would not be a consideration for the court to consider. Therefore, it cannot be a factor for the architectural committee to consider. The only precedent the court will consider is the perception of the resident who owns the dumpster and whether or not that person thinks the covenant is enforceable, and here's why. Going forward, the perception of the landlord is the perspective we must consider in administration of all the covenants. That is the court view of the issue, the property owner's view, not the observer's view. We have to ask ourselves, how does the property owner perceive the covenant? And what is his expectation? Or what has been his experience regarding enforcement? That's the problem. What has been his experience regarding enforcement? If the trash cans, there has been no experience. Another thing that we need to consider is the change circumstances principle. The change circumstances principle is that the covenant can no longer achieve its purpose. A court may decide that it won't enforce a restraint on the use of property because it won't do any good. It merely allows one person to harass another person. Or maybe the court decides that the original party, as like the metro district in this case, must not have intended the covenant to continue because it was no longer beneficial. A good example of changed circumstances is the VFC building, where the covenants dictated that the facility must remain the property of Colorado City in perpetuity. The change circumstance is that a new clubhouse was built to replace it. The old VFC building clubhouse was not being used and was no longer beneficial, fitting exactly the wording and the principle. More than likely, if the sale of the building had been challenged in a court of law, the court would not have enforced the covenant that required the VFC building to remain part of Colorado City. The covenant to keep the VFC building in the ownership of Colorado City was not a law. It was an agreement that was changed by circumstances. The business judgment rule is another item that has to be discussed. You can ignore a law, but you cannot ignore a law. But courts have ruled that covenants may be ignored or altered at discretion of the architectural committee if it is based on the judgment. That is the business judgment rule. This means that for any complaint brought to the architectural committee involving covenant enforcement, if the complaint ended up in court, the judge must determine whether the architectural committee has properly investigated the complaint, acted in good faith, and whether or not the architectural committee has acted arbitrarily or capriciously. So let's break that down. Good faith means taking actions with honest intentions and without taking your proper advantage in the circumstances. The other requirement is that the action taken is not arbitrary or capricious. And what does that mean? Black's Law Dictionary defines arbitrary or capricious as a willful and unreasonable action without consideration or in disregard of the facts or law or without determining principle. A Denver Heels quote describes it this way. "An action is arbitrary and capricious if the agency, one, fails to use reasonable diligence to determine all the facts necessary to make its decision, or two, fails to give proper consideration to those facts, or three, bases its actions on conclusions reasonable people would not reach on the same facts." Fiduciary duties impose a high legal standard on architectural committees and members. The business judgment rule allows considerable latitude and discretion to the committee's decision as long as they are taken prudently and in good faith. So what are the rules for committee enforcement? Now, you can tour the city or receive complaints. To be successful in any lawsuit based on a complaint, the courts require consistent, identifiable complaint gathering processes. And we need to start establishing that history. We can have a totally valid court case against the resident and lose the case because the judge, on a whim, didn't like our complaint process. The courts have identified two methods of obtaining complaints that they will accept. First, touring the neighborhoods on a scheduled basis to uncover issues that need to be resolved, or second, processing complaints only as they are reported through the architectural committee. Currently, we have a mixture of both processes. As for touring the neighborhoods, in the video on covenants the board members watched, the presenter talked about inspecting houses for broken windows, peeling paint, and more. Fortunately, those are typically HOA issues, not metro board issues. But the problem with the touring process is that we would have to drive slowly through each street in Colorado City and watch for issues about which we do have concerns. It would have to be done on a regular, scheduled basis. If we missed some streets or failed to spot something in one residence that enforced the same violation at another residence, even though it may be accidental, it could be selected enforcement which the courts will not accept. We have to have a near-perfect inspection and touring route process. The safest protocol for the committee to follow is to only process complaints as they are received. In theory, complaints should be received with random and concerned citizens and distributed across all sections of the city. It assumes that citizens carry out to say something if they see something. That way, the district does not choose in which what properties to investigate, and the enforcement is random. So let's talk about Title Seventeen. In the review of our questions several months ago, a second document our attorney provided us mentioned the Colorado Covenant Ownership Act. The act was written specifically for homeowners associations, but it also is applicable to metro districts. In that document, there are a number of suggestions on how a metro district can proceed in enforcing covenants. The CCI OA website also contains suggestions for enforcement. One recommendation is that as much as possible, to use the county codes like Title Seventeen land use and Title Eight Hill for clearing complaints. Other HOA sites also recommend using county codes. Their suggestion is that it even helps the county to understand what is going on in our area. County codes are legislative laws, they are civil law, and they carry much weight in court of law, where judges only have to make sure the violation fits the letter of the code. Public County already has an experienced staff of legal personnel to handle that rare instance when a loose lawsuit rate is necessary. And Public County Planning has the personnel to investigate the circumstances of the complaint, saving the metro district both time and expense. If the motive in submitting a complaint is to resolve it, the administrative path that is used to accomplish that should not matter as long as the complaint is resolved. The public county codes cover issues our covenants do not even address. In fact, our covenants are so devoid of specific violations, we currently have to use Title Seventeen codes for some of the complaints. They are in regard to catheters, cargo containers, litter, weeds, health-related issues, type of fencing, and more. County codes can be used where they are to our advantage or where the issue may eventually require court action based on a codified civil law. Let's talk about the trash cans. What are the facts concerning the dumpster issue? Well, the dumpsters have been in place for at least thirty-five years with no complaints from the architectural committee. Now, if the covenant is not enforced, the abandoned principle of statute of limitations only requires several years to nullify a covenant. The three yard dumpster is too heavy to move to the backyard as the covenant requires, even when it's empty. To empty the dumpster, the trash trucks drive over the driveway to get to the backyard location of the dumpster. It could damage the driveway where the concrete, asphalt, or rock, rocky mountain disposal already has had to happen. So the dumpsters must remain by the curbs so they can be emptied. The trash cans in some areas must be bear proof. The three yard dumpsters, the best bear proof container available, plastic trash cans can be destroyed by a bear, including those that are sold as bear proof. The bears can actually chew through the plastic. There are videos on YouTube showing bears doing both. Colorado State Wildlife in some places is issuing tickets to residents without bear proof containers and told us that in hearing the metro board presentation, that they prefer the metal three yard containers the best option. The Colorado State Wildlife Officer agreed with our findings regarding bear proof trash containers. The advisory committee has met several times with the owner about disposal, and he has no better alternative for us to consider than the three yard dumpsters as a whole, the bear problem or the dumpster location problem. He even brought a plastic bear proof containment to one meeting so we could see how trashy it really is. Using the arbitrary and capricious standard, what would be the conclusion a reasonable person would come to regarding these facts? All indications are that we'll take an application of the business judgment rule and solve the trash can complaints. In fact, it is this issue that created the need for a deep dive into the covenant enforcement that explores and explores all enforcement issues. So what does the advisory committee need from the board? Well, there's a great eagerness to get the advisory committee processing complaints because everyone realizes there are messes to be cleaned up. The committee agrees. Therefore, there are three actions we need from the board. One, with the exception of construction related requests, we need an understanding with the architectural committee that we can utilize the public county codes whenever possible for our recommended solutions. Second, we need an understanding that when neither the covenants nor Title Seventeen fit the circumstances, we can make recommendations using the business judgment rule for resolving the complaints. And third, we need an agreement that the method we use to acquire complaints will be as received by phone, email, mail, walk-in, and other. We will not be touring the city and looking for violations of the covenants. This is to satisfy the court requirement that we have an identifiable and consistent complaint handling process. Until we have these agreements in place, the complaints will remain on hold. To satisfy the above, it may require a formal resolution or an informal understanding between the architectural committee and advisory committee, so we don't have to debate our process each time we submit a writing base. And that's the end of my formal words.
Okay, so what I would like to do now, this is, the primary purpose of this is fact binding. I'm going to give each board member up to ten minutes. You can use that ten minutes any way you want. You can make statements, you can ask questions, you can do a combination of both. Once your ten minutes is up, please do consider with other people and then folks in the room were giving you that same opportunity. Does someone want to start in particular? If not, hurry, I'll just start with you. So again, you can make statements, you can ask questions. You can use your time however you like.
I mean, that's a very good presentation, Barry. And I think we need probably the last thing first that these has maybe come up, the three things that we need to have in place with that committee so they know what they're doing. Use the public county codes, the business judgment rules, and then the complaints phone thing. But I agree, after listening to all that, if you drive around, then we'd be selecting. And I think that there's enough eyes out there that they can bring a complaint in to us and we can deal with it. But I think, because we can't be, as people would say, you're out for somebody. That's the last thing we want. We just want it cleaned up and we want it looking nice. I thought it was well done. I'm just looking at the case law and the common law, and I think we have to go by existing laws and what we can do. We may want to do something differently, but we don't have unlimited monies to fight a lawsuit. And I think back, if we had sent all those letters out to all those people in the trash cans, we would have had a zillion with the E. court right now. And I think this is the right step, and I think my recommendation would be to have them come up with some ideas here to present to us in writing, what we need to follow the public county code, boom, boom, boom. And then we pass resolutions to give them the teeth to do that.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Greg, are you ready? Do you have a few comments, questions?
Um, so I heard most of what he was saying, unfortunately, the mic is on your computer is what it wants picking up. But my understanding of what I was getting right from him is that we need to pass some guidelines regarding the trash cans and other covenants that we're going to enforce. Is that the basics that he was giving us?
Yeah, Title Seventeen doesn't even cover trash cans. That's going to be a business judgment call.
Does Title Seventeen covers trash cans?
It does not.
Does not.
It does not cover trash cans. So the only thing that's covering trash cans is our covenants.
Correct, correct. Which we don't have, which we don't have to worry about.
The thing he was mentioning was is that we have two ways of enforcing this, correct? One was either driving around, tagging violations. The other was by enforcing and by complaint, correct?
Correct, and it wasn't, he was saying that those were the two possible systematic ways that would stand up in court. And I believe, and Larry, don't let me put words in your mouth, but he can hear me there. I believe he was suggesting that my complaint, by the eyes of the community turning things in, was probably the best, just so you weren't missing specific streets or people, et cetera.
I agree a hundred percent with that. I think the driving around thing is turned into a complete mess. I think we should be enforcing specific complaints turned in by citizens. So what he's suggesting that we do is that we come up with guidelines before we start enforcing anything. Is that my take to this?
That's correct. Yes, he said that is correct.
Okay. I really don't have any other questions right now.
Okay, Neil, are you ready?
Uh, yes, a couple of questions. This benefit to a resident being primarily, I'm concerned with that. That kind of sounds like if the benefit to the resident is the primary consideration, then how can you enforce a covenant about pink color or anything else? Because the resident might consider his pink color the most beneficial. That's new construction, and in construction issues, I have a problem. So construction, the construction is not. If I don't like my neighbor's trash can because it's an ugly trash can and trash is scattered around, I can't make a complaint. Or I could, but again, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't go through.
It would go through. The point is that there's no covenant thing to cover, and that would take a business judgment rule. Otherwise, we have to use our own business judgment on the side. Anything can be turned in. I still don't understand how this benefits the resident being a primary consideration of covenants.
Okay, that has to do with the law and the courts. And so the question is, has the resident been informed that there's a problem? If the resident has never been informed, then the resident can assume that's not enforcement.
I see.
Or is it being enforced? So that's, the problem there has to do with the enforcement of the committee. If the enforcement is negligent on the part of the committee, then the landlord has a defense.
But I think I see that too. It's a fact in.
That's correct. Not on the resident. Another question, though.
Another question though, of, I had a lift down here and I can't, can't. Let me, let me go into that piece that you just had though, if that's all right. The, the way that the laws are set up, Colorado City, whoever was in Colorado City, the owner, originally wrote the covenant. So it's not a law, it's a contract. So he wrote the covenants. The Metro District inherited that, those covenants, and it passes through with the land, okay? When the person who buys the property, son who buys the property, he agrees by default, that he will abide by the covenants, all right? So there's a dual obligation. The resident agrees, he will do what he's supposed to do in regard to the covenant. There's also an obligation on the, on the architectural committee, that they will perform their task and enforce the covenants on everybody. So if the covenants are never enforced, which is about what we've been faced with, then the negligence has been on the part of the architectural committee. But they'd have to look at the resident's perception, that's what the court would do. They would say, how can the resident be involved when he was never even told? And anyway, the difference between the new building and, new building's fine. And the new building, and are they two separate issues?
No.
New building's fine, we enforce that day one. The court says the first day that you put covenants in force, you have to begin your enforcement. I can't find anybody that says we ever did it. But you have to start it, you have to continue it, it has to be a regular process that you continue from that day forward heading to the night. And we didn't do that.
Doug, you're, you're about to eye manatees versus touring, I've read that. I think the touring, they become a police force, this doesn't work. And I also read that using Title Seventeen. I think that, what about noxious activity with Title Seventeen? That would also cover not trash cans for trash.
Uh, trash litter, I think, if I remember, they have a, a rule in Title Seventeen, that they send out a notice of the property owner, that they have so many days, I mean, fifteen days, to clear it. So in that fifteen day period, they either will clean up their mess, or they have to appear before the board and say how come they haven't done what they did. I, I'm not sure. But that, I'm not sure if it's the county board, or is it county board? So if they, if they failed to clean it, clean it up, or failed to appear, they issue a warrant. All right, that's it for me. We, we don't have anything close to that happening. Okay, thank you Neil. Bob, are you ready?
Uh, if I'm not allowed to respond, then I'll go away. Okay, Jim, where are we going? Uh, one of the things that he said, I gave you what Terry and I have been attending with the Sheriff's Department. You have two sheets, Terry, as to some of the issues as what we're looking at with Title Seventeen, coverage of, you know. And one of them was litter ordinance, uh, what the county attorney looks at as litter, uh, wastewater treatment, removal of litter and non-compensations, it replaces down to where it covers it under, under the Title Seventeen. You know, even your land use, uh, it doesn't say that you cannot park and argue out there, but it is also the same sense, it, there already is in there, that you cannot park and argue because you need to have disposal services too within that land. One of the things that Larry, I've seen said, that if I get a complaint that this dumpster looks out of place, whatever, it's a hot, hot pink dumpster out there on the, in front. Now, that's where the committee could turn around and say, hey, he needs to paint it, it needs to be neutral tone, whatever, so that it lies there. In that aspect, not that it's hot pink. So that would be kind of a business wise judgment, as compared to saying, no, you just need to pull it. So that's one of those aspects that I look at in that. I know we, Larry and I went back and forth, we, I, I, on the point, yes, we have, and we've showed consistency on building side of it, you know, following judgments, I have files downstairs, I have plans for probably the first house that came in here. And it's all in our files, and it goes from year to year to year to year. Like I said, we went down there, we looked, we haven't ever found any complaints or any complaints that they, they got with the board. That's one of the areas that I'm concerned at, and that's ninety percent of my job is to keep us out of trouble, out of lawsuits. But I don't want to, I want, I still want to cover the covenants. But there's some of them that life has changed. Situations have changed, you know, uh, it's, for example, if somebody wanted to change zoning down a lot, they've turned around and bought three or four lots, and they wanted to make it a multi-family block. As long as there was a multi-family that was contingent with it, they can go to zoning and do it. That's part of that growth. It's like being down here on one sixty-five, you had a business district, and that business district is continuing to grow as people want to put in a business. And that's done through changing that, being contingent with the property that they can do that. So I'm just here, I want to resolve the issue, give us direction as to where we want, where you guys really want us to go, and is it worth it for the, the district to be in it? You know, uh, I, we've had opinions from three different lawyers, whether it be our lawyer, uh, lawyer through SBA, and even people, other lawyers that we've talked to and read on their sites how to deal with it, asking questions with them, they all come out with the same thing. And that's what we're talking about, is it has to be common sense judgment, or common rule judgment, as to where we need to go.
Uh, anyone right now from the audience like a little bit of talk? Sure, what are you?
Eric.
Greg, good.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just have a, this is a question. Uh, I'll say this, I live, I made, my mom and I lived here in seven, nineteen seventy-two. And, you know, lived in and around this community for a long time.
What do you think will stay?
Huh? Well, you know, it, it's magical. I mean, Colorado City has magic, and, you know, it's some for the good, some for the bad. But, um, just a simple question is that, and this has been proposed to me from different people. Is our architectural control committee all encompassing? And the reason I bring this up is, it is, I think when you look at, like, there are several units in Colorado City. And one of my understandings was each unit, such as Applewood, has its own ACC. Can you answer that?
It has its own covenants.
Okay, so the, the ACC that we have now, is it encompassing Applewood? Is it, or is it encompassing all of Colorado City?
It's all Colorado City.
So is that within the guidelines or the bylaws of, of Colorado City?
It's applied, it, it follows the land, so every lot that was sold, the covenants are attached to those lots within the city of Colorado City.
Okay, but you're missing, my point is though, is that each unit, say, unit twenty-one, or unit, what? Is supposed to have its own ACC.
It is, it is, so it's covenants?
I'm just structuring that as a question.
Eric, Eric, I think what you're, I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, is that it would be like an HOA. That each, each unit would have its own HOA. I'd love to have that. But the way it has ran from the beginning, or as far as I know back, when they did have a CCACC committee, it was all encompassing, and it's been that way. And that's why that has now fallen through, and I think that's why the board has come in and said, we need to start this up as a committee, as an advisory, and the board took over the responsibility of the committee. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, I do, but, but I'm, it's been that way for years, and because I don't think, none of the units ever wanted to have their own HOA. The only ones that I know of, it's like South Park, but I agree to them. I mean, my opinion is that covenants are only as good as the people that can enforce them.
Yes.
And we have been successful in that. But, um, so what do, what do the bylaws, I mean, this is still a question. I mean, are we stepping outside of our boundaries to have one ACC that controls the whole nineteen thousand seven hundred lots out here? Or, or are we stepping outside of the box?
That's been the tradition. I don't know what.
But is it the law? Is it, is it in the, is it in the?
In our bylaws?
In the bylaws.
Exactly, like, I said, I'm just going off of past history as to, okay, you have the CCACC committee, and that's how it ran until it was disbanded, it has been disbanded for five years.
And you hit the magic word, because we go through episodes, through my history living here, where we'll have an ACC, then we don't, then we do, then we don't. And then when we don't, then it's just run amok. And nobody is, you know, submitting plans, and then we rely on the fathers north of here to regulate Colorado City, and.
The plans are being submitted. New, new construction.
Well, that's the new, that's the new ACC. I'm talking about, you know, where, where was the ACC five years ago? And I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at you, please.
When, when we went through the office, I went through the office downstairs, ran into a letter from an attorney that was apparently an advisor to the Architectural Committee down, and said that all records should be destroyed after three months. So we have none. And, yeah, I can't find any, there, there's no verbal tradition, I can't, they will all do that.
And then, yeah, yeah, my, one other item that I have is that, can we afford you? Can we afford you? I mean, are we, are we just sitting back racking up attorney fees?
No, no.
I mean, I don't think we can, because we need our money to go to water. We don't need it to go to frivolous attorney fees that are gonna just be chasing, because I guarantee you, an attorney is gonna send you a bill as often as you want one. And do we need that? Can we afford it? And my, I say no, we can't afford it.
And that's where we're looking at on, on the aspect of open, opening up the eyes and seeing everything, is that we don't want that to happen. We don't want the attorney fees, because you see it on TV every day. Oh, you gotta come, like, come see me in Bristol, and the city conditions free, oh, put, start the lawsuit, I get a thirty to give, two birds. They'll try to, so that's why we're trying to make this step and going forward and saying, hey, are we being responsible? Are we doing our homework to get there so that we can make the changes?
I'm gonna interrupt here a little. Eric, primarily we're discussing the covenants themselves, and I understand how that's connected, but Larry has no.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just presenting questions, I'm just serious.
So basically what you're saying is you're concerned about any money that would be spent?
Well, I don't think we can, I don't think we can afford it. I mean, Pueblo West, you know, split the same thing. And, you know, and I mean, they rack up attorney fees that are, you know, much more.
Well, yeah, right. So, so did you have some more thoughts about the covenants themselves? You also talked.
Well, what I've always dealt with in my tenure out here, however that long that is, is I will clean up my backyard as soon as the next guy does. And seriously, Colorado City has a backyard they need to clean up too. And if Colorado City wants to start enforcing, telling people to clean up their backyard, they need to clean up their backyard.
Agreed with that.
All right? That's all I have to say.
All right.
Forward steps.
Okay. Uh, Bill?
I'm sorry. Well, there's so much to tell, I don't know if you covered my comments in ten minutes, but covenants and restrictive covenants, Larry, have different definitions in Black's Law Dictionary. A restrictive covenant is a negative, and if, if the statute of limitations don't necessarily flow with a restrictive covenant, they flow with the land. Uh, as far as a CCACC, I can guarantee you, when I moved down, moved to Southern, moved back down here in two thousand eight, they had one. And they continued to have one until about two thousand and fifteen. And so to say that they've never been here, they've been here all along. And, uh, so they, they did enforce covenants, they did them all the time. They went way beyond covenants. They even sent you a letter telling you, I couldn't park my car on the street. So they were active, and they did their job. So, you know, as far as saying they're, they're obsolete or they can't be forced, that is not correct. I think you go to a number of websites and you can find that number of case law. I don't know if you jeopardized the information you got or not, when you took it up and get your stuff through Vex, or wherever you're going to do it through. But, you know, some of your case law that I run across, obviously, that's a mentioning I've looked at, and it's federal attorney, it's, it's not good law. So I'm not sure where we're going with this. My understanding when this came down was that the committee was an advisory committee. They weren't going to be making any decisions. That this board was the decision maker. That appears to be not the case. And as far as those trash cans, I've complained about those trash cans were put there three years ago, I have complained there some year. I have complained about trash cans for, since two thousand and eight. The covenants in unit twenty simply state they have to be in an enclosed area. You want a three yard trash can, put it in an enclosed area. Get the trashy look, make the property look nice, put it in an enclosed area. That's the covenant complaint, not the trash can. And it isn't enforceable covenant issue. And I think the only attorney's told you that. Bear proof three yard, no. You need to go to D O W's own website, do a look at it, because it contradicts what you guys told me about three yard. And those three yarders that are all around my house, they are not bear proof. And any bear proof trash can that you've got, if you think it's bear proof, that it's got the leather on it, if the homeowner doesn't put the leather, it's nothing more than a place for dogs, squirrels, cats, and everything else to put it out on the street, have a nice, more of a sport while you go clean it up for your neighbors because he put his off fall for his deer hunting. And he won't do it. So, you know, all of this issue that we're talking about, need the guidelines, the guidelines are pretty clear. If you've got a complaint, the advisory committee goes out and sees, yeah, that's a possible complaint. It should come to the board. The board should then do all the processes that Larry's talked about. And I, the advisory committee. That's my thing. And as far as each and every unit, yes, they can have their own. Each and every unit has a paragraph at the bottom that says they can be changed by a majority vote of the property owners within that unit. The Colorado law has stated that a super majority of the voters will change the covenants. In other words, if you have a unit with a hundred people or twenty people vote, if you get fifteen of them, that unit. you get fifteen of them, that unit becomes whatever those fifteen decide. So if, if the unit wanted to have its own ACC, they could. Now, I, I don't know why you guys don't want to, why, they're just not moving forward in the process. And as far as separating the building side from the, from the violation side, I would say that would be selective enforcement. If you can't do one, can't pick one, not the other, can't do one and not the other. I got a lot more I want to say, but I think that's time. Thanks, Eric.
Okay. Just a minute, Eric, I want to give everybody a first glance. You want to say anything?
No, I'm just, I'm just here to support you.
Bob, you want?
I think we just ought to get up the three things that Larry talked about here, if you can't approve them, and then go back to your place and modify them.
Just a second. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, so Larry, as you understand it, if, if we pick a covenant, any covenant, reinforce the covenant against someone, you guys, you check it out and say, this bylaws blah, blah, and blah. The board says, okay, we sent the letter, they don't respond, we take whatever action is next. And they say, they mention any of these things, this has never been enforced, this is changed, it isn't relevant today, whatever they say, what's the downside of that? I mean, even if they file a lawsuit, we can recall the complaint at any time.
My understanding is that when you go into court, whatever, is it the first, I'm just covering enforcement, the first thing the judge is going to ask for is your enforcement protocol, okay? And they want to know the enforcement history. Well, the protocol we can come up with, but the history we can't. There is no history.
Okay, so again, what is the downside to us, other than that?
Judge, nowhere. That's why on a whim, the judge can just throw the whole thing out, because there is no enforcement history, which means that there is a, there's been an abandonment of the covenants. And that's the abandonment pixel, I didn't go into that.
Okay.
We, we, we can solve that, you understand that? We, we can, we can solve that, right, from what I understand, we can reaffirm the covenants, is that correct? And the board can reaffirm the covenants, and reinstate and restart the history. That would be a good thing to do. But that doesn't mean that there's anything in the covenants that we can mention for, because everything, everything isn't a nuisance. And we've tried that too, put together the paperwork, the first thing, and Larry said we're gonna find nuisance. What is it, I, I filed one piece of paper, did one of the first ones I filled out, I thought, well, this pile of concrete's a nuisance, all the concrete isn't bothering anybody, it's just sitting there. So the question is, did the homeowner understand he shouldn't do that? That's where you look, from the homeowner's stand for. If the owner, homeowner had never been advised that concrete is a pile of rubble that shouldn't be there, then we really don't have anything to stand on. The court doesn't care, whether I think it's ugly.
So aren't we advising them when we send the, the.
We don't, we don't have any teeth in our covenants that says you can't have that pile of concrete sitting, not that I know of. It says you got, it's, you can't classify it as a nuisance.
So, so my second question, and probably the most important one of the few I have here, is, okay, so if we can do this, and we can't do that, and we can't, because of past history, uh, how do we clean up Colorado City?
We can do anything. It's just that we have to do it differently. Title seventeen should allow us to do whatever we need to do with this. That takes care of the trains, takes care of the litter, takes care of the weeds, takes care of the campers, uh, they have regulations involving the cargo, the overseas containers that are showing up on the lots. We can decide if we want to allow containers on up. Uh, there are things we can do that we haven't initiated. But the covenants, the way they stand, are, are very nonspecific, at least that's my interpretation, compared to what we're confronted with.
So, and, and I wanted to, I think Bill mentioned it, I think Jim mentioned it too. Yeah, my understanding also is that you guys aren't supposed to be directly in the light of fire, that you are the investigative arm that, that we as a board all, we make the findings.
Right.
You don't have time to do it all. That's what I agree with.
Right.
Um, so, as the covenants are written, irrespective of if they're enforceable, non-enforceable, the three of you all understand that if we decide that we want them enforced, are you all okay with that? I mean, as far as advising us that there are this, 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 and this?
If, if there's something in the covenant specific to the complaint, they'll allow us to enforce it.
Harry, about ninety percent of all complaints will fall under Title Seventeen.
I, yes, and my, my personal concern about that is getting Pueblo to do anything, but, but I do, I do understand what you're saying.
But the good side of that is that if it goes into legal action, it's theirs, it's not ours.
Right. And they have more teeth than we do, I understand.
Yeah, they're dealing with laws, we're dealing with.
Okay, before we go second anybody, Bob, do you want ten minutes or so?
Yes. Okay. First off, ninety percent of what you just heard is total BS. Now, that said, let's get into some of it. Mr. Larry, who are the parties to the covenants?
That's just the law.
No, you're wrong. That's one of the problems with your thesis here.
Who do you say, who, who do you say it is?
Your attorney told you who it is.
No, I get this, this is from the attorney, this is from.
The parties to the covenants are the property owners, no one else, period. One property owner against the other property owner, that's it, as far as it goes. Now, what happens is, the way I was written, is the Metro District was set to appoint a committee for enforcement, but not to be a party of the covenants. They do not control the covenants, they don't set the covenants, they don't choose the covenants, only enforce what's on the contract. Who's the contract between? The property owners. Metro is out of it. Which law overrides covenants? You, you started with law, which one overrides covenants?
Well, the courts can override any covenant.
Which court?
The business, business judgment rule can override a covenant, and fully acceptable.
Business judgment rule is not a court or a law. So which law overrides the covenant?
Business judgment rule is a law.
It's not. It's not a law, it's a way of operating within the law. It's not a law.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman. Okay, I want, I want to find your opinion of stuff in fact.
I am, I'm going to. I always think I can sum it this up. Treat it the same as others by law. We pretty much agree there. You enforce upon one person, you have to enforce upon the other person. That's standard. Another statement you made, Metro inherited covenants. Metro did not inherit covenants. Again, the Metro is not part of the covenants. Matter of fact, if you look up any Metro property, there are no covenants on it. Ever notice that? No covenants on Metro property. And also, most of the businesses in town have no covenants on them, because they were commercial. Commercial covenants are different than use covenants, but we're under the use covenants. Courts look at the covenant first and foremost at perception. No court deals in perception. They deal in facts. That's it, nothing more. Now, they can take into consideration, uh, way things have been done, but they don't look at perception, no court does. Perception of property owners, property owner doesn't get a cho, a choice in perception. They are party to the contract. The contract is between the two parties, property owner and property owner. You brought up the BFC building. You're totally wrong, and you're biased. Damage, not responsible. When you say that if the garbage truck backs over a curb, or, let's, let's not use curb to term, curb belongs to CDO in most instances. Uh, there's a few, uh, areas around here where the Metro owns, uh, the sidewalk in the curb, but most of it's CDO, and, uh, we don't have curbs in most places. Let's talk about maybe a ribbon that you put out for the truck to back over. If you make that available to the truck, the truck is not responsible if they break it, you're bringing them in. So that part's out. DOW does not recommend dumpsters with plastic lids. I think Mr. Ellis brought that up. If you go to the DOW site, not what the gay warrant told you, but you go to the site and read their different brochures, they do not recommend that. It is not considered bear proof. It is a help, but it is not considered bear proof. We cannot override covenants for the convenience of a covenant. You say, don't enforce certain covenants, yet we're given the position as the Architectural Committee. You guys are just a review. You just say, yep, it's covenant, or no, it's not. It stops right there. You don't have to determine if it's a good covenant or a bad covenant. This board carries the insurance of how we proceed. So you, you don't have to determine if it's a good or bad covenant. We do. And we're not allowed, not only by the covenants, but by our rules and regulations right here of not treating one party any different than any other. So if we enforce a trash can on one party, we cannot not enforce it on the next. It goes down the line, all the covenants. We cannot override the covenants, okay? Complaints are not, uh, on hold by the CCA-AC. I don't know where you got that, or who told you to put complaints on hold. Wasn't your position to do that. You're there to review what came in, only. Not put anything on hold, just deliver to the board your findings of whether or not it was a covenant issue, not Title Seventeen or anything else. That's the board's decision. We don't turn things over to the county when it's our responsibility legally to enforce first. If we can't, then we have the right to move it on up the line. But we are supposed to do the enforcement if it's covenant. If it's not covenant, we're more than welcome to just turn it over to the county. You don't make that decision, we do. I'll read one thing real quick, before we get too long on time here.
We've got three minutes.
Use covenants are different, because each day of violation restarts the statute of limitations. So the district can proceed, at this point, to enforce compliance with the trash covenant, even if the dumpster has been in place for more than three years. Who wrote that?
How dare I tell you?
So why are you telling us to do something different than what our attorney tells us to do? Yo, that's what's getting irritating here, Mr. Chairman, is I didn't get this until today. Our attorney has already gone over there, and I'm sure there's much, much more in here that I'm unaware of, because I didn't get it until an hour or two before I had to get here. I haven't had time to read all sixty-four pages. So when our attorney says enforce, and we refuse, now what have we done? Now we're in violation of this one over here. All we asked you to do was review, that's it. Not spend six grand, asking the attorney's opinion, and then tell us not to do what the attorney said do.
An exclaimative order, Chairman? No. I'm trying to, let everybody have a second. But again, these guys didn't order anything.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to counter dick that right this minute? I request my time back. I've got it here, if you want proof, that they did.
No.
No, you want to see the email. Do you want to see the email? I've got it here, if you want to see it.
What I want you to do is quit wasting your time and share those things that are.
Well, that's the problem here. They sent the emails.
Mr. Cook.
Mr. Cook.
Eric, stay out of it. No.
I waited.
Move on. Move on, move on. You're wasting your time.
I'm not wasting any time. I expect that time back. On that same email, our attorney carbon copied another attorney, and there was no dispute. So again, legal action says we're supposed to do it, and they're telling us not to do this. We don't need to change anything. The thing we need to change is just maybe some members, whether or not they do what they were asked to do. They volunteered, I get that, but this board only receives information from them. They don't make decisions on part of this board. You said a judge can, uh, toss your claim at any time. I agree. I've been there. You can have all the evidence you want, perfect, in line, in order, and that judge can say no. Well, the only choice you got then is to appeal to a different court. But, hey, Judge, you're right, they can toss it at any time, they don't need a reason. CCA-CC, my note up here, cannot enforce, let's understand that, people. They cannot enforce it, we do that.
One minute, and I gave you your time back.
Thank you.
Wrap up. And then Eric, I'm going back to you, and Bill, I'm going back to you.
Am I at? You know, I wish I'd had all of this printed out in front of us, uh, but emails were sent, not by Jim. Now, I haven't received the attachments yet, but it clearly states in here that the attorney found no problem with us moving forward. Now, I requested that we find a covenant attorney. Matter of fact, our attorney even recommended to. We never got that. Not once did we get that note. This board has been lied to on numerous things. Mr. Chairman, I yield.
Okay, gentlemen, before I go back to you, I asked Zoom people if they had any questions. Most of them were covered by, uh, fairly short answers. Let me see if there is anything. Uh, someone asked about whether covenants could be changed. Uh, Greg responded to that one. Another person said. Another person said, uh, enforcement should be done on all complaints and covenants or any other complaints that may be titled seventeen. I don't feel the covenants need to be changed or updated. Someone asked if, uh, there's a link or list of the covenants on the Metro website and there is. So you can go to the Metro website and there is a list of the covenants. Uh, Greg and Bob, I know you both had something else you wanted to say. I want to keep it there, just a couple of, uh, Greg, I'm sorry. Eric, all right. I read Greg here and looked at you. Trying to keep it fairly short.
Bill brought up a key word, enforced. And, you know, I just want to talk about that word. We can send out all the letters that you held it, held in. But what is the two? What is the two in enforcement? I mean, every time you enforce something, do you gotta get a bill from a $250 an hour bill from an attorney to enforce it? Then what are they gonna do? What, what is the final, the final say, enforce? What are you gonna do? Go take a bulldozer in and clean it off or what, what does enforcement mean here?
Well, the ultimate enforcement is court action.
Can we afford that?
Well, that's, that's, that's the last step. What we do is send letters out first. And that county does the same. They send a letter, thirty days, no response. Send another letter, thirty days, no response, fifteen days, then they will go to court. And if they, if they don't respond to the court, then they will take action, send it.
Uh, real quick is, uh, we can't cherry pick the covenants. You can't just sit and cherry pick which ones you're gonna enforce and which, which ones you're not. It has to be across the board. Second of, or third of all, you, uh, we brought up the term, uh, KYWA, Colorado Common Interest Ownership Act. Does that apply here?
No.
I don't think it does. Because what lot in Colorado City have, I know in where I live, we do have common interest ownership. But I don't think that KYWA applies in Colorado City.
No. The, what the KYWA site was, it was suggesting was for people who were involved in that, use the county. And that wasn't court. You use, use the county codes for enforcement. And that's a work for motive. That, that's a work for motive. And that, that's what I'm extending that.
Bill?
Well, a couple of things I wanted to touch on is if you give your decision making out to your committee, I believe you're looking at violation and color of constitution because they are not elected to make decisions. So I don't believe that you should be doing that. Secondly, you've already reaffirmed your, your, your covenants. You set it out several months back on a couple of pages printed on the back of the water bills. So that, that's already been done. The third thing, everybody talks about the trailers and the, uh, that you can't do anything about it. The first thing in your covenant says if anything placed there has to be approved. There you go. Did you approve that container down there on Lot 6 in Apple? No, you did not. So why is it there? Why haven't you driven by it dozens and dozens of times? Why haven't you sent them a letter? Why haven't you contacted Title 17 and said, "Hey, we didn't approve this in the law." How about all the trailers on the green belts? Why don't we get rid of those?
Cause we don't do drive bys.
They know, they know about them. I, I, and besides that, I turned in a bunch of complaints that haven't made their way up here. Anyway, I, I think it's pretty simple that you get your, if you, the committee does what they should do, is if somebody files a complaint, give it to this board, let this board make its decision. And, and that's where it should be.
Yes, sir, there is. Just a comment. When I was talking about the Architectural Committee in here and what I said, I was talking about the board, not the party. And what I'm going to do, I'll send this out and I think they'll see it. I was talking about the Architectural Committee, that's at us, that's, that's you guys. We'll send this out tomorrow, okay? What I said, sure, there's no question about it.
Eric, do you have any last comments?
The only thing I'm concerned about is, is down the road when we send out all these violations and they start to contest them, who's gonna pay the legal fees?
So where do you want to go from here? You want to not do anything on it?
Oh, no, I, we need to do something. I just think there's more of a common sense way to look at stuff and I think that, you know, um, the trash containers are a big item. But I still think if you put, I mean, those covenants that say you gotta have some kind of contain, uh, something, knowing that area and the pride people have in that area, I think it would end up being trash, you know, a year or two. So, and I just, I think we need to use some common sense solutions.
So give, give me a, give me something to, uh, District Chairman, I have to respond to districts that are continuing to grade the people in Apple. The people in that area have pride. And most of the trash is on your green belt and on your property, CCM, Bill, please clean it up. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, I mean, I mean, I drive through there and I don't know where the trash is because I see somewhat in the backyards, but that's irrelevant. I think, so again, I'm not even, I mean, I don't know what to, I don't, I know what to do with that, but I, I think that maybe what we need to do is just, is start like, uh, this gentleman said. Give us, give them those regulations that we have, boom, 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 from the Pueblo County, and they just take the violations when they're presented and give them to us and then we make our decisions on it. I think that's something.
Neil, you have some final? I guess one thing, the dish with the, the CCAC is that I believe that we as a board understand that we, we did not expect you guys to make a decision. And you are an advisory committee.
Just because somebody said we were, it's not that we've never accepted that as being our job.
It's an advisory committee.
We might bring the limited covenants back with them because you knew they'd bring our recommendation.
So that's all the, yeah, that's, that's advice, not judgment as to proceed or not to proceed with the board and what kind of board management. So I don't, I don't think that any of us would like to do. But what I would like to see us do, I would like to see us, uh, use Title 17. We need to move forward. But I'd like to see us also, I'm afraid that, that I feel like that we, because of perception, we need to take some kind of action. And I would like us to, to make sure that people understand that the covenants are what they are, that they are covenants, and that we send out a notice that we are going to begin enforcing on January fifteenth of two thousand twenty-one or whatever. And, and the letter should state that such that we are going to enforce complaints. That we receive complaints, we'll, we'll start through the advice of Doc Dusty, as to whether it's a legitimate complaint or not, and begin to take action and start enforcing. Even on the trash containers. I'm afraid we're opening up a can of worms there, I do worry. But I don't think we can not do it. I think that we need to take some kind of action. I'm afraid that, that we, we have to, we have to take action. I think we need to move forward, move here with it. The, the alternative is to disband. And I don't think that's what we want to do. We want, we want to move forward, we want to be an active board. It's on you. Jim?
I agree, we just need to, we need to move forward with something and come to a common ground. It has, okay, you want us, you want us to look as the ACC, as them, to say, "Okay, this is a complaint. Looked at it, yep, I can see where these people are complaining. Here goes, you, you put in that decision again, whether or not you want it, that you want us to all complain." And just a recommendation from the board, from the committee?
No, I don't think we want a recommendation. We just want to know if it's how they comply.
The other, the other aspect of it is we've, we've set up letters and we went and started. There, that letter that they set up and we did do one or two of them and it was critiqued to the point of no record. That's why it's like, okay, yeah, this is what we need to do. You could say, "Yeah, you need to go back and revise it," whatever. But we need to say, "Okay, here we go." Or if you have that much time that you want to critique it to that point, write it yourself and give it to us and we will send it out the way you want. If that's an issue. The other thing I have a question when Bob said that all Metro property is not responsible for the covenants?
No. I will answer that. If you look at Metro property, that's your green belts, your, uh, parks, wrecks and buildings like this and a few others, almost all of it, with the exception of the, the F C building, didn't come under covenants. Now, that particular building and that golf course, the quote, old nine or whatever you call it, and the surface around the lake and the surface of the lake is covenant protected. The rest of it is, it's protected by our, our rules and regulations here, but it does not hold covenants against it.
I just wanted to get that because
Again, are held property owner to property owner.
But no, I, 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 I think by doing this, it gives them directive, it gives me directive, and it gets what's in mind. Because I can sit here and I can listen to Bob, I can listen to Neil, I can listen to Harry, however, and then I listen to them and it's like a jumble of mess. So if we can all get on that same page of, okay, when we see something that falls not only in covenants, but it also can be in Title 17, I think we, yeah, we can send out the letter for covenants. But we have that Title 17 in our back pocket if they don't want to do anything court action. And that's, that I have, I, I would rather give them a good neighbor letter and, you know, responsibility up to this point. Okay, if you don't get anything, then, then we can turn it over if we need to.
Bob, do you have any last comments? Um, what he just said there, we can turn it over. We cannot turn it over until we have no authority. We have no authority after we litigate it.
And where are you basing that?
We are, have appointed ourselves Architectural Control Committee. Now, the committee doesn't own anything, doesn't have any rights other than to enforce on behalf of the property owner. We enforce on behalf of them, not Pueblo County. Pueblo County's out of the picture. We don't, we are the Metro. That's it. Nothing more. The Metro doesn't even, like I said, they don't even come under the covenants except for a resolution and it's in the resolution book, you can go look it up, that the Metro agreed many years ago to make themselves part of covenant enforcement. Basically, I don't know it word for words, you'd have to get it and look at it, but they determined that in the essence of making covenants flow properly, that the Metro should act as though they were under the same covenants.
Anything else you'd like to add?
Greg, did you have?
Eric.
Eric.
You know, Greg, this time I meant sorry. So Neil, I thought, all right. Go ahead, Greg, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Uh, okay, so, um, trying to word this correctly, I'll, I'll tell you what. Um, we need to either enforce these covenants or not enforce these covenants, but either way, we need to get off the plot and do it. Um, I think before we leave this meeting, we should give a directive for them to either enforce these covenants and start sending us up complaints immediately or we need to dissolve this meeting and go back to taking care of sewer water. But I don't think we should be playing around, you know, let's just do it or don't do it, but let's do it before the end of the That's it.
Eric, Neil. Every year when I sit down and write out my property tax check that goes to Pueblo County for a lot of money. There is a department in there called Code Enforcement. Are they doing their job? Because every property in Colorado City sends a check to Pueblo County. Are they doing their job? To enforce code. And to enforce code, that's Health Department, there are several different agencies that come into that equation. And I'll be very honest with these people. I had an individual from the Health Department come out here last week and I took him on a self-guided tour of Colorado City. And it's not the first time. I mean, I enacted that when we had, and it's called urban camping, is what it's called. We have urban camping going on out here and that's where they're dumping their, out there on vacant land. This is just a homework assignment. Is the Pueblo County code enforcement, are they, do they care? Do they care about Colorado City?
Do they? Have they cared about Colorado City? I don't think so. Now, are we, are we taking action to try, try to create more care and to get some activity from them? Yes, that is happening now. And of course, that's the Title 17 we talked about as far as turning over to Pueblo County. Is it going to happen fast enough? Probably not. But we are taking action. When I suggested that we use Title 17 and Larry suggested use Title 17 wherever we can and use it mostly, that's it. And we need to actually try to get more enforcement from them. And we've gotten in the visits that there's, there is a committee of the sheriff and the group that are quite active now of getting rid of this urban camping and taking care of some of this stuff. And that is an active committee now working with the sheriff. So are they, have they done a good job? No. Are they going to? I don't know. But at least we're actively working on it now and trying to move forward, understanding that it's not gonna happen overnight.
Well, sometimes I feel like we've kind of become the enablers to a lot of urban camping because they all have water tanks and they're all coming over here to the stand pipe to buy their water, which that supplies them with their basic needs.
That's, that's kind of good.
And so that, you know, that's another.
But yes, we are working with them to get that.
Eric, um, I, I agree with you up until now. I also am on that committee with Cheryl Taylor and a number of agencies. Part of the problem is just like us. There'd be fifty other things we could do if we could hire more manpower to do it. They have two people to cover Pueblo. But do we get left to the bottom of the aisle?
Well, just with my mom and, uh, we moved here in nineteen seventy-two, we lived in Isabella. And none of you people know this, but there was a house across the street that was labeled the Honda Virus House. All the windows were knocked out. It was, it was unsafe. Kids would go in there and roam around. It took Pueblo County over twenty years to come in and demo that house.
Yes. Okay, last time.
Yeah. I would, I'm gonna disagree with Bob as citizens. Anytime we become aware of a violation, whether it's Title 17, covenants Title 8, we should be turning it in. I think it comes up from the committee that there is, that this is a covenant and that we believe Title 17 it should be, Title, Pueblo County should be notified. Be a good citizen, notify. Everybody talking Title 17, Title 17, Title 17. Most of the things you talked about in here are in Title 8. Not Title 17.
Thank you. We were just using that, I think that's the better play. It's easy to say that than make, uh, cause most of, all of your house comes under it.
So, um, in, in difference to what Greg said, there were, uh,
So, um, in, in difference to what Greg said, there were a couple of attaboys on Zoom. I would.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, you may.
Can we take action in this meeting?
We, yes, we are allowed to take action.
I would make a motion at this time that we direct the CDCAC, I believe is, hope I'm not quoting that. And the city manager to forward all legitimate complaints, actually all complaints on the bill, forward all complaints to us over the next couple of meetings, depending on how many there are. So that we can start taking action on this. And also to supply us with a update sheet my director Cookup has asked for for the past several meetings, um, every meeting that we take. And we need to start this next meeting.
Okay. Last second. I have a motion on the floor, and Bob is just seconded in discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Maybe that, we need some, some assistance, some advisory committee assistance here as to whether it is truly an enforcement action, if we need to enforce. If it is a Title, if it is a, if it's a violation. I mean, what's the advisory committee going to do? What are they for? Just to receive the complaints and pass them to us, or are they there to actually?
No, as I understand it, they will tell us if it is a violation.
Okay.
That's why they don't make recommendations, they don't say, get after this. That's how you guys understand it, right?
I understand, we were supposed to come up with some sort of solution to pass it on as a recommendation, just an advice.
I don't know the reason for why I'm.
Yeah, we're passing paper forward, there's no reason.
Yeah. You can get, Eric, you can take that.
Yeah, just take the complaints and hand them to them.
Well, except that you have to verify that it actually is in existence. You get that. Mr. Chairman. But, my, yes, Bob, I'd like to address Neil's concerns. The advisory committee takes a complaint, uses it, checks it, to see if it is a covenant complaint. If it's not a covenant complaint, at that point, they mark it as not covenant, and then they say, well, it is Title seven or Title eight or whatever, and they send us the two reports. If it is covenant, we don't need Title 17 until we have processed covenant. That's our first step, is to then send a letter.
Basically, that's what I was asking for, not just to send us every complaint, but to actually provide that what it is a, a violation of.
Yes. And, yes, sir.
I, I, the law goes top down, not bottom up. We aren't there just for the covenants to see if the covenants is violated. Easier to go top down, see if it's an eight or a seventeen violation. Then the county is responsible for it that way.
So to amend the motion, I think, is what kind of what I was asking for, with what the advice is to what kind of a complaint it is, and is it a viable complaint?
Greg, did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
Uh, basically, um, what was suggested was that the motion be amended to bringing the complaint forward with an assessment of, uh, is it a covenant complaint or a title this or that complaint?
Yes, I would agree with that.
Is that what I heard you guys saying?
An invalid complaint, I mean, is it?
Well, yeah.
Is it actionable?
They can't make legal determinations.
Yeah, no, but is it actually a?
Oh, if a determination is done by the board.
If it's actionable. If there's enough there for us to talk about.
And who?
Are you okay with it? Okay, I need a second then to Neil, uh, to Greg's motion already.
Is this getting over?
No, no, I'm just back on getting a second.
Oh, could you?
That was Greg's motion, right?
Yes, Greg's motion, he amended it, Bob is not willing to follow with the amendment. Neil amended it.
I'll send his amendment.
Okay, all right, it's been moved and seconded, we're back in discussion. You have something.
Uh, while those something said you opened a can of worms, we started taking in these complaints, et cetera, and looking at the covenants, spitting with the O W guy with the, if we have state issues, the sort of trash, litter, trash cans, et cetera, and all that. And we discovered that things have changed in the last fifty years. You just now opened up a can of worms with you're, you're going to follow these covenants to the letter, and you don't have to. And that's what we were asking for tonight. We have a board here that was going to basically adjudicate the covenants that are needed for this era. Now you're going to go back and follow these covenants to the teeth, and you are opening a can of worms.
No, no, that isn't, that isn't what the motion says at all, is I understand it. The motion says if it's a actionable, uh, yet we have no, no legal power to, to change the covenants. But we do have the power to choose which ones, uh, to some degree, to enforce and not enforce. But we have to know if it's a violation and what it's a violation of before we can do that. And that's where you guys are so important.
That's not what I heard.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to ask a question. Which covenant can you choose not to enforce? You just said you have the power to choose. Okay. I'm sorry to be stopping. And I, I agree, but what I'm saying is, the committee is to bring us actionable items. But we, yes.
They bring us all items.
No, I don't want my time wasted if they go out there and.
They just made their, an open public meeting.
Okay, never mind, I'll adjourn in the meeting. Yes, Neil.
I would hope you stay calm and hear my point here. I agree with Bob, you did have to make a decision, whether you just want them to bring you only actionable. I've worked in situations where we have committees, and what we're instructed to do is to take photographs and bring the information to the, to the decision.
Okay.
And the decision maker then decides whether it's actionable or not.
Okay, I apologize for not wording it just exactly right.
Pardon me?
I apologize for not wording it exactly right. I don't want them to go to a lot where somebody says there's a pile of trash and there's nothing, and waste my time.
They should be, they should be bringing you a photograph of the nothing. And then it, because the next thing you're going to have is on the other side, the person who turned in that pile of trash is going to want to know if you actually did it. Because maybe they didn't go to the right address.
Right.
So you need to be have some kind of proof in your file that you actually dealt with that thing.
No, that's not bad idea. Now, one more question to the committee. I don't know how many complaints there are back there. You guys are doing this for nothing, other than out of community service. What is a reasonable amount of complaints every two weeks? Now, in this case, it's just a week, to bring forward to the board if they're available? Three, ten, a hundred? You know what I'm saying? What is a reasonable for gentlemen who are volunteering their time to bring to us?
We can break them down into like categories, like we deal with dumpsters.
Well, we want things that have been brought to us.
Yeah, or by time.
Pretty chronological, just do it chronologically. But see, some we've got backed way up from.
Yeah, from the beginning of the year. Which we can probably do, maybe can, if you know them at a shot. That sounds pretty aggressive to me.
Okay, so what is, what is it that we're going to be turning on? A picture, a picture of the, of the problem?
Or a form, what it. And a, and a form letter as to what, like the good neighbor letter with the covenant violations in it.
Yeah, and then we decide.
Thirty-one we turned against when rejected.
Okay, so.
So what I'm trying to figure out is what is it that we're going to put on the piece of paper that will be viable, rather than just reject it? So we don't waste our time. And that's why I was asking for the three, for three decisions, so we had a path that we could send home.
Uh, in conjunction with the motion that's on the floor, because I understand the urgency of getting started on this, we'll also try to formalize those things. I'll, I'll bring a proposal to the board, I'll try to get it to them well before next meeting so they have time to look over it, pick it apart, and we'll try to do that. That's not, uh, the ordinary task. So between now and less than a week, what's reasonable to bring the three oldest, the two oldest, the five oldest? Let's shoot, let's shoot for ten, okay? And if you don't get that, obviously, that's all. Okay, this is a discussion before we vote on a motion. Did you hear him, Greg? He said he thought they could bring ten by next week?
Yes. I mean, and I understand if he doesn't get it, he doesn't get it.
Right.
We need to get this ball rolling.
Mr. Chairman, I call for a reading of the motion. Uh, I'm the leader of the motion. There's a motion on the floor to begin enforcement. Uh, no, let me rephrase that. There's a motion on the floor, you tell me if this is exactly what you said, Neil, to begin investigations.
There's, there's a motion on the floor to bring forth complaints to the board for, for review.
Don't have been reviewed.
Have been reviewed. And considered violations.
That have been reviewed. Uh, well, actually, I do kind of see where we would want to review them regardless. It'll take us two seconds if there's nothing there. And then we have, uh, we did go. So person A doesn't say, well, they didn't even follow up.
Then we had an amendment, did that go right?
No, that, I think it was.
With the amendment.
Oh, with the amendment, okay.
Yeah, so, uh, that we will begin by next meeting, bring forth complaints. The goal is ten that have been received for review by the board. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the motion to include the spreadsheet that's been promised.
Yes, the spreadsheet that was amended, Bob, it was in the first one.
It was in the first one. All right. I just forgot it.
To put a spreadsheet for complaints and status of complaints. I realize that the first one, uh, might not have anything on it, but at least the template.
Yeah, the template is status, because we, we won't have made any pursuit. All right, is that all the questions? Is that all clear as mud? Did I read that directly off the minutes? Okay, let's vote by voice vote. Eric?
Yes.
Neil?
Uh, yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes, motion carried. Is there any opposition in the adjournment this meeting?
I have one thing that I want you guys to look at. This is kind of a draft of the stop work order. There's also, uh, the list of attorneys from the SDA with it, uh, from what they recommended. I just, I put in, and I had Carol look at what I was doing, and she says you're on the right path. The only thing is, I needed to have the amendment to go into the bylaws for the hearing and all of that. So she cleaned it all up. Uh, I know there's going to be some concerns because I didn't know how you guys wanted to do it as to who would be the person that would be responsible to put the tag on the door. Would that be me? Or are you going to appoint somebody to do that?
We haven't got to that point yet.
Wow, and that's why we put it in this, just as me, and I would have the power.
So this is who to look, yeah.
Look at. And I will probably send it, it will be sent out with your pocket. There's all of it there.
Is this in the discussion?
No, this is.
No, this is, this is.
I want to make it.
Stateman only. Okay.
Do you have to drop one off to me at the house?
Sure.
You said it, uh, uh, it says by manager. Uh, I just now see it down here, by manager. Could I make a recommendation that you add by manager or, uh, agent of the manager? Because that way you can pass it to the sheriff if we do, or what if only who is locked into you? So you might get the correct verbiage to make it, uh, whether anybody you can appoint then, the sheriff or, hate to say it, Bobby or somebody else, you know, it, it doesn't lock you to it, but it makes it your choice at that point.
I agree with that. Jim, would you, uh, read the last message and see what you can answer on? And if not, we'll give an answer back.
I hate to be late.
No, uh, will someone, oh, yeah, if an HOA has, and a metro covenant are in conflict, which one has the? If they're in a HOA, they're not in the covenants.
Yeah.
Okay. And let me, if you're having any doubts. All right, any reason not to adjourn? Mr. Chairman, I call for adjournment. We need to adjourn.
So really, you have just become a bunch of paper pushers?
Well, no, we've done a lot of stuff that I didn't.
Well, because, I mean, I have a lot of compassion for the community as well, so we did, but.
It's like I didn't bring enough of the trash can. Now you gotta give a mouth.
Oh, huh?
Mouth.
Of course.
You gotta, you gotta pay for this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Big business.
And you can't, yeah, you can't.
No, no, no. I have a way to exactly about.
Can I back down?
Well, if you're in that position, it would be more than oil. So things are, things are just now souring down.
And that's all good.
But I think you guys sat into this position. And now, now your job is. We're going to.
Well, no, that's what we're trying to clarify here.